Good morning. If you're willing and able, would you stand for the invocation and the pledge to the flag? Mr. Pastor Archie Norman of Henry Baptist Church will present the invitation.
Let's pray. Father, thank you this morning for the new day of life you've given to us. Thank you for our county government. And we pray for our commissioners today, Lord. We ask you to give them wisdom from above as they make the decisions. Trust that, Lord, they might be what is best for the people here in our county. We ask you, Lord, to show us your way today. And we bless you. We thank you. Ask you, they might be ministers for good today. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, in the business of liberty and justice for all. Good morning and welcome to the regular BOC nine AM June the second meeting. We now come to order. Before I ask for acceptance of the agenda, I'd like to ask the board if we could amend the agenda to add one item, which will be a resolution appointment to the McIntosh Trail Service Board. Did I get a motion?
Where do you want to add it to? Where do you want to add it?
We're going to put it, it's still, it's on here now. We're going to leave it right here on number five.
Okay.
Okay. I got a motion?
I'll second.
A second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Pose, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. I would like to ask that the agenda be approved with that one addition. Could I get a motion?
Move to approve.
I get a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Same sign, pose. We have an appointment to the McIntosh Trail County Service Board. Hand out one. And I'm going to make a nomination that Susan Craig, who is on there now, that she be reappointed. And if anybody else has got an appointment that they would like to add, I'd appreciate that.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Next, item six, we have a staff recognition for the tenth certificate of activity and excellence in a finance report from Government Finance Office and Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Last month, the Henry County Finance Department was awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, known as GFOA, for its fiscal year 2014 comprehensive annual financial report. This is the tenth consecutive year that the Henry County has earned the certificate of achievement in financial reporting, having been judged and evaluated by an impartial panel, meeting high standards, and demonstrating a full spirit of disclosure to clearly communicate Henry County's financial story. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and represents a significant accomplishment by Henry County Government and its leadership. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association dedicated to the sound management of government financial resources, serving more than seventeen thousand five hundred government financial professionals. And for those interested in the public, for a closer look, Henry County's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending 2014 is available online at our website at www.henrycounty-ga.org, under the Finance Department link. And Finance Director Fred Oletta is here, and he would just like to say a few words about this honor and recognize his team for their excellent work.
Thank you, most, thank you, Board, for this recognition. Let me just start off by saying that truly, myself and this county is truly blessed to have the staff that I have in the Finance Department, very learned, very experienced, especially dedicated to their daily job responsibilities. They always work together. I can always count on them to help each other out without you being asked. And more importantly, for the citizens, they're always there to keep a close watch on the taxpayers' money, making sure it's properly and safely handled and recorded. At this time, what I'd like to do is bring them up one at a time, introduce them, and they're here today, and they're all here. I just bring them up one at a time, just quickly introduce them for recognition as well. First is Mallory Wimpy. She was hired in two thousand seven, been with the county almost eight years. Her job title is Junior Accountant. She does P-card and bank reconciliation. She enters tons and tons of entries into the general ledgers of all the books. Next is Ricky Martin Hay, not to be confused with that lawyer on TV. She was hired in oh seven, is January of seven, been with the county almost eight and a half years. She makes sure that all of our vendors and everybody gets paid. She's an accounts payable administrator. Next is Sloan Jinks, hired in July of oh nine, been with the county almost six years. Title is Accounting Tech One. She does all the cash receipting, making sure all that one hundred and thirty-four million that you budgeted gets into the books and gets deposited and safely taken care of. Next is Gina Vance. Gina's been with the county since July of oh eight, almost seven years. There's about sixteen hundred employees every couple of weeks or month. Count on Gina to make sure they get their paychecks, including yourselves. Next is Christie O'Neal, been with the county since July of oh five, almost ten years, coming up in a couple of months. Title is Accountant One. She handles all of this sploshed record-keeping, accounting, does an excellent job. Next, Danielle Gunn, been with the county about a year. Sadly, she decided to transfer and benefit another department, but we're happy to see her promotion. She's title of Account Tech, Accounting Tech, does fixed assets, construction in progress, council receivable billing, airport receivables and fuel backup. She's backup to cash receipts and banking. Next is Dustin Farren, been with the county since October of ten, almost five years. Titles in Accountant Two, does cash management, inbound outbound wires, system fixed assets, and a lot of monthly reporting. And then last, but at least for sure, is Lori Lynn Robinson, been with the county since July of thirteen, almost two years. She is my Assistant Director of Finance, helps in the preparation of the audit, making sure we're ready for it, monthly quarterly reports, basically does it all, and quite frankly, couldn't run the department without her. I'm very blessed to have her, have joined the county and joined with me and the rest of the group to make sure the finances of this county are properly recorded and taken care of. So, that's your Finance Department, and thank you much for the recognition.
The next item on the agenda is public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concern and option, et cetera. They are not listed on the agenda during the portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the comments speaker form, and you will be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. And we do have three of them. And number one would be Mr. Bill Tony. He wants to speak about County Manager Rick Jeffries.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to say is, the previous county manager, he didn't just go missing over here. He had, he had a sexual harassment case against him. This is y'all's report. I hope every one of you have written, you, you've read it. There's some pretty damaging stuff here. Now, this for me is kind of bittersweet, because I've been telling you guys for a year to get rid of the guy, and you didn't do it. You ignored everything. I spent hundreds of dollars and hours of time researching to come up with all these facts. Y'all just ignored everything. The bad part of it is, there's a victim involved, a young girl. A victim involved to where you really owe her an apology. And you owe your chairman, Chairman Smith, an apology, because he tried to do something about it. Every one of you guys wanted to put me down, because I could see the handwriting on the wall, which was very unfair. Just because a guy is in the military doesn't mean he's awful, always truthful. So, you need to start listening to people and doing your, doing your homework, doing your job. This is what you were elected to do, you need to do it. Okay. Y'all had a, Rick Jeffries, he's serving on the water board. I had a meeting with, with counsel, along with four of those gentlemen down at the State Capitol. The counsel, the attorney down there, he came down and met with us. He said it was a conflict of interest. Pardon me? I went down to Mr. Yates's office.
Okay.
And he pulled the guy down. I'll tell you what, I'll get it to you this afternoon.
Okay.
I do have it in my office. I don't think I have it here.
But it was Representative Yates that you met with?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Me and four other gentlemen. But anyway, we, we met with him. And then y'all came up with these letters. Y'all said they existed, but they're all dated April the twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. Now, this might be a revised copy of the letters. The attorney, he read parts of the letters in, in, in open, in the meeting, all right? But he didn't read all of them. This is just like a kid asking you to go ride his bicycle, and you say, okay, but he left out the part that he's going to be riding it down Interstate seventy-five. That's the way I look at it. He took out what he needed, but he didn't read it all. And I'd like for him, before the meeting's over, to read both these letters, because I've got where he highlighted, then I've got where the question that was asked was, a sitting senator, can a sitting senator serve on the water board? Is it against the law? No, it's not against the law. But the ethics on it is, when you've got a company, J and T, and you're a senior engineer for Mr. Turnip Seed, engineered, and which Mr. Turnip Seed goes for financing for people, and Rick Jeffries sitting on the, as a senator, it doesn't all gel really well. Now, even beyond that, you got, each one of you have this. Now, it's not always a conflict of interest, but the appearance, and it's very important, the appearance of a conflict of interest. This right here, I went online and looked at, and this is Mr. Jeffries again, Symphony, I'm sure you know about it, Symphony at Eagles Landing. Now, right in the last page of this that I pull offline, is this right here with Rick Jeffries. It looks like he's endorsing this project as a state senator. If you read it, you, you know, it's right up above the funding. His picture, he's the owner. They said he's a partner. Now, there's just too many coincidences, and what I've learned in politics, there's just about no coincidence in things. And I'm asking, I'm asking you, do the honorable thing and take him off the water authority. Now, I, when you, me and you had a conversation about you putting, you putting your letterhead on your emails from the county, and soon as I brought it to your attention, you took it off. Okay, that was the honorable thing to do. I give you, I give you credit for that. Sir.
I, I have a question.
He, he, it's not over. He went into dialect.
I stopped the clock.
So, but, but I'm just saying, I'm about finished. He responded to me.
Let, let him stay out there.
The clock went off.
Young.
I know you're new at this, but.
Mr. Tony, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you have any proof where Rick Jeffries has made any money off the county?
Sure I do.
Made any money financially?
It's right here. Would you like to see it?
Yes, I would. I want to see where he's financially. Huh?
The citizen's estate, that's his financial.
Now, what I'm saying is, his private business, has he made any money off the county by serving on the water authority board?
His influence? I don't know.
Financially, has he made any money?
There's your financial, read it. You had your records up here.
Well, you ain't gave me nothing. When'd you just give it to me? Good Lord. I ain't no fast regal.
If you could put it on the overhead for us, too. It's from Representative John Yates. And then put it on the overhead, if you don't mind, too.
That's not what I said.
You said you had a meeting with Representative John Yates.
If you want the other four gentlemen to come here, I'm willing to get them up.
Let's put it on overhead, and then I'll read it out to the public. Put it, put it on the side where we can read it. And if you could pivot it ninety degrees to the right.
Not the best I can do there.
While that's getting set up, I'll read this. This is dated May eleventh, because we've been accused by Mr. Tony that we're not doing our research and due diligence. So, we've, that's the reason all these letters are dated, is because you asked for clarification. We wanted to give you acting clarification. So, I'm going to go through these piece by piece, so we can hopefully put this to bed for good. On May eleventh of two thousand fifteen, a letter dated to, I mean, titled to Mr. Bill Tony, from Representative John Yates, who's a state representative for District Seventy-three. He said, "Dear Mr. Tony, my friend Senator Rick Jeffries tells me that you have made a statement about my relationship with the senator that I find incorrect. The statement is that if Senator Jeffries accepts a position on the Henry County Water Authority while remaining a Georgia state senator, that this would be a conflict of interest. I do not recall ever meeting you or talking to you, and certainly would not have made such a statement, as I've never thought that way. In fact, I admire him for wanting to take on this responsibility. Sincerely yours, John Yates, State Representative, District Seventy-three." Also, I want to go through, I've got a, the letter. No, don't interrupt me. Mr. Tony, I didn't interrupt you. So, if you want to stay up there and have a dialogue with us, you have to let us continue this process. So, we had Sam Owens, who's the Attorney General, drafted a letter, and he states all kind of case law and other things, but I'm just going to read one paragraph, and then people, we have this, this is open for public records. You're welcome to come to the county attorney and, and request this as well, as if you, and this is a letter to Senator Jeffries from Sam Owens, the Attorney General for the state of Georgia. And he says, "As you previously discussed with former Solicitor General Nels Peterson in two thousand eleven," that's, that's addressing your concern, that you said, "Has this ever been asked?" Well, in two thousand eleven, there was a letter issued back then, but we wanted to give you updated information, because people have changed, positions have changed. I didn't want you saying, well, we don't have a latest opinion on this. "There does not appear to be any per se conflict between your services as a state senator and your services as a water authority commissioner. This office has previously opined that a member of the General Assembly could serve as a member of the local authority without creating a constitutional, statutory, or common law conflict of interest. Nineteen ninety-seven, Attorney General U. ninety-seven dash eleven. A copy of that opinion is included for your information and the legislative legal explanation therein appears to equally applicable to this issue of your service on the local authority while also serving as a member of the legislature." So, that's from the Attorney General. Then, the group that you said you've met with, I've got a letter from the Legislative Services Committee, dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen. U. two references. If you go and you read it, it also states all kind of case law, but then it has, right before the closing paragraph, it says, "Since the duties of state senator and the duties of a member of the Henry County Water Authority do not appear to conflict, there does not appear to be a common law conflict of interest in holding both positions simultaneously." And then Mr. Senator Jeffries even went a step further. He went to a local attorney out of Griffin. He went to Andrew Whalen, who wrote a nice letter dated May twelfth, two thousand fifteen. It says, "Dear Rick, I appreciate you conferring with me about the unfounded allegations cast against you by a Henry County citizen alleging a conflict exists between your services as state senator, a member of the Henry County Water Authority, and the co-owner of J and T Environmental Services, a company that manages small water systems. I have reviewed the opinion dated April first, two thousand fifteen, by the Honorable Sam Owens, Attorney General of Georgia, and the opinion dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, from Deputy Legislative Counsel Jeff Lanier. I find both opinions to be correct analysis of conflict of interest law in Georgia. I have personally known you for many years, and have been familiar with your services of J and T provides to water systems in central Georgia. In examining your work through J and T, I do not find that you or the company you have performed any services for Henry County Water Authority. There is no conflict arising from you providing materials or services to water systems other than the authority, which is a legal entity in its own right. Combined with your former service as a Henry County Commissioner, you are known to be a reputable public servant, who has given freely in the best interests of the county and your senatorial district. If this gentleman continues to appear before the county commission to make false allegations that cast dispersions on your good character, we need to seriously consider filing a defamation lawsuit. Please keep me advised as to his future actions." And then, this is the other thing, that I've, I've been thinking about this, because I'm in District Two. You've ran, everybody is very aware, Mr. Tony, you've run for District Three to be a commissioner twice. But I'm in District Two. I'm not even in your district. Why would you have an interest in who I've appointed to a District Two Water Authority? And then it started hitting me. And I've realized, you're kind of on shaky ethical ground, because you've let it be known to friends and family that you've considered running as state senator against Senator Jeffries. You have let that be known publicly, that you have an interest in potentially running against Senator Jeffries. You've also, it's been publicly made available, that your brother is running against me if I choose to run for reelection in District Two. Both of those actions put you on shaky ethical ground, is what your motivation is even to come up here and talk about who I appoint to District Two for the water authority.
Can I ask you a question right now? You keep rambling on. This says this letter's to me.
Right.
How did you get it?
We have a copy. You see, he's got a copy down there.
I never got this letter.
Well, that's why, I just delivered the letter to you. You weren't at the last meeting.
I didn't get a letter. How do I know that this is even Mr. Yates? I met with Mr. Yates.
It's on the letterhead.
Are you telling me that I'm lying right now, that me and four other gentlemen?
I'm not telling you anything, Mr. Tony. Representative Yates is telling you that you're, that something is astray here. I'm not asserting anything. I don't have to.
He never sent me this letter. I would have four witnesses sitting here right now. You want me to, next meeting, you want me to have four witnesses saying that they were down here at this office with me? And I'll have a letter from the secretary? I just called the secretary, if asked her if I was down there, she gave me the, the name of the attorney that was down there. I mean, if you want to bring it all out next meeting, you give me no warning on this. I try to give y'all a warning on everything that I'm coming with. Now, you're being unfair, showing this right here. I mean, I don't know anything about this.
How many meetings have you come before us to talk about Senator Rick Jeffries? This has got to be the fourth meeting that you've brought this up.
Right.
It's been made public that there have not been any conflicts of interest that have been published in the press. So, for you to continue to come forward, it just shows that there's an agenda here.
When I ran for District Three, I made promises that I would help try to clean up the county. This is the kind of stuff that I feel like that I need to be looking at, and I'm coming forward. I made promises, every one of you guys made promises, that you're not holding up. You're definitely not holding up. I, I held up to what I said I'd do. I'm laying everything out here. You ask me for anything, I got it for you. You show up with this right here, this is a lie. This is a lie.
So, you're calling, you're calling Representative Yates a liar?
If he said, yes, sir, buddy, I am, because I've got four witnesses and his secretary, they'll tell you that I was there. We met with him.
Provide us the name of the attorneys you met with, with the Legislative Service Committee, because I, they do not recall meeting with you. That's what I've been told.
Do what now?
I have been told, the group that issued this letter, they even said, if he can provide me the names of who he met with and who said it was a conflict of interest, that there would probably be some disciplinary action if that did even occur, but based upon Representative Yates's letter.
This is a lie.
They, nobody even recalls you meeting with them.
Me and four other gentlemen met with him.
Well, I'm just going by, I can only go by, I wasn't in the room. I can only go by the letter that was issued by the representative.
Have I got it through the mail or anything? This says it was dated to me. What are you doing with it?
I was told to hand-deliver it to you. If you stood up in front of the public again.
From who? Who told you to give it to me? Who told you?
I was given this by, because copies were given to both Senator Rick Jeffries.
So, you got this from Mr. Jeffries, that he went down and conned this man into doing this, I'm assuming, because this is a lie. This is not true.
From a defamation standpoint, you're now accusing Senator Jeffries of fabricating this letter.
No, I'm not. That's not what I said.
So, who do you think created this letter? If you're accusing Senator Jeffries of defamation and lying.
I'm saying this is a lie. This is a lie. Whoever, because I was there.
Representative Yates is lying.
If he, if this is a true letter from him?
Then he's lying.
He's lying.
Okay.
Because I was there. I met with the man. I've only met him one time in my life. It was in his office at the Capitol with four other people. Now, if he wanted to mail this to me, or Rick Jeffries wanted to mail this to me, he should have mailed it to me and got it, got it to me. It said, I don't know what you're doing with my mail. Can you explain that?
It's, it's, it's made of.
Why do you have my mail? This is made out to me, not me and you. It's made out to me.
It didn't run through the, it's hand-delivered, and it was in its own envelope. I have a copy. You can see, see though.
So, you gonna wait till open session to give me this and not let me prepare for it? Or I could get a letter from Mr. Yates that I was there, and a letter from his secretary that I was there, me and four other gentlemen.
So, every time you've come before us publicly, you've given us a copy of your transcript of what you were going to tell us. Because you're now acting like you're off-put, that we bring up forward information, fact-based information, that surprises you. And now you're saying you're mishandled. That, that just, it seems a little shaky.
All these letters that I see, you don't, they're not putting the company up. They're putting senator. I've never said, I've never said that it was illegal.
Well, I think we'll leave it.
Now, do, are you familiar with conflict of interest and appearance of conflict of interest? Appearance of conflict of interest, and from what I understand legally, is just about like being a conflict of interest.
Is there appearance of conflict of interest if you're running for political office and you're standing before, using the county's facilities, the county's meeting place? Is there a conflict of interest if you're running for office to coming up here and being on public comments?
Sir, let me, you don't know what's going on in my life. Me and my wife, we've been looking at property down in Orange County. I mean, in the Orange Beach area.
But you have made the statements you've considered running for the state senate.
And I'm considering it right now.
Right.
I'm considering it.
So, you're on record as that you've considered running for state senate? And you're using this as a platform?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. This right here, all I got to say is, if you'll, if Rick Jeffries comes off the Water Authority, which I feel like is, I feel like is a conflict of interest from everything I've read. If he comes off the Water Authority, I'm done. That's the only thing. You had, you had a bad county manager. Y'all, oh, I mean, I'm telling you, you had a victim in this thing. Y'all, it was uncalled for. If you guys would just wake up and do your job. This right here, I promise you, I will have you a copy from Mr. Yates's office saying that I was there. I'm going to meet with Mr. Yates, probably if I can, this afternoon. Now, you talk about defamation of character. This right here isn't good for you. You know, to bring something like this out, it's not good. Hand delivered to you by Mr. Jeffries.
Doesn't look good. Thank you, Mike.
Next, on the public comment, we have Mr. Chuck Conley, Project and His Subdivision. You have five minutes, sir.
I'd like to address the commission about a situation I consider to be an assault on the subdivision that I live in, apparently with the nod of approval from the commission. I've been a homeowner, taxpayer, and a conscientious voter in the county for 30-plus years. And yet, Fox TV feels that they can come into the subdivision, take full control to the point that I was threatened with arrest by a county police officer on Saturday evening when I returned from the grocery store. I've spoken to the county interim manager, deputy fire chief, and the police department regarding these problems. I believe Fox TV came to the commission seeking approval and got what they wanted without any consideration for the taxpayers. If they or any other entity had come to our subdivision and wanted to construct a multifamily dwelling, they would need to go through a process of seeking a variance, which at the very least would allow the people most directly impacted to voice their concerns. I believe we were deliberately left out of this process, and I suspect it was due to the fact that Fox is a big league player within the media. I have a serious concern for the safety of the people and the homes located farther back in the subdivision. At the very least, they would not be able to bring in all the equipment necessary to save a house that might catch fire. They would have extreme difficulty bringing in even the most fundamental firefighting apparatus to the homes at the back of the subdivision. Monday morning at 8:00, there were two large vehicles completely blocking the only road in and out of the neighborhood. There was a very large RV parked at the curb and then a tractor trailer alongside, having extreme difficulty trying to navigate a 90-degree turn. Even in an emergency, there was no way that even a police vehicle could have gotten through, let alone an ambulance or a fire truck. There was literally no place to go for the better part of 10 minutes. For the most part, the people involved in the project have been very cordial and have offered to be most accommodating. However, I don't find it at all appealing to be put up in a hotel. I have worked hard all my life to have all the comforts that I choose in my home. So, because Fox TV wants to come remodel a home to a needy family and grandstand while doing it, there's no reason I should have to leave my residence and face prospect of being charged with criminal trespass when I fail to follow the rules set down by Fox TV, an entity that does not pay taxes or vote as a resident of this county. The last time I checked, we were still living in a democracy where we, the people, are responsible for making the laws through the process of government with all the checks and balances. I know that at least one of the commissioners has expressed an opinion that we should align ourselves more with Atlanta. I didn't move to the suburban or rural setting so that we could live with the decisions made by the city of Atlanta and even bigger government. In closing, I would like to say that the irony has not escaped me. As I stand here in the county seat of our local government, I can only think how poignant, knowing that only a year ago, the citizens of this county celebrated the county's namesake by erecting a bronze statue honoring the man who coined the phrase, "Give me liberty or give me death." If he had stood with me on Saturday evening, he might have been arrested.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, number three, we have Mr. Carl Swanson, Henry County Office, Industrial Park. You have five minutes, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen. Try as I might, I had a hard time trying to find out how the counties work together within the corporate environment. And I had no problem finding Clayton County's Commissioner Jeff Turner as the CEO of Clayton County of, okay? I did, however, have a problem finding Mr. Smith as the CEO of Henry County of. As a matter of fact, Henry County of, we don't, we can't really find any officers at all. But, but, what we did find is that through corporate research, that Henry County Office Industrial Park Corp., located at 110 Zach Henry Boulevard, shows that Mr. Smith is the active CEO. Hmm, okay. And we also found that the Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation, which by the way, is doing a hell of a job. They really are. The way you guys are handling this stuff is incredible. The Henry County Government Finance Corporation, located at 110 Zach Henry Boulevard, also has the active CEO as Mr. Smith. Now, right now, I have to put forth an open records request because I need to know how Henry County Government Finance Corporation is tied to the Henry County Finance Group that we have here. Because nowhere in any of the documents that I've seen or presentations, and I don't mean to disparage anybody in the finance department, but nowhere have I seen anything that correlates with the finance corporation. And to my knowledge, nobody here is aware that these corporations are running in the background. You know, I've told you in the past that I believe that you guys are operating as corporations and not as government entities that we have elected. This kind of goes to show that. So, the open records request is to give me the correlation between CEO Tommy and Smith of the Henry County Office Industrial Park Corporation, which is active right now and deals with legislative bodies and the county commission, and also the Henry County Government Finance Corporation, with an active CEO of Tommy Smith, and how they tie together with the finance department here in Henry County. Now, having said that, I have to move on because you also heard me talk about the conflicts that are with the court system. Whenever a state charge is brought against a defendant, you will notice that it is the state, not the state, but state of Georgia that is the plaintiff in this. A simple search of Dunn and Bradstreet will show that the Georgia bar is the state bar of Georgia, which is state of Georgia. Now, folks, tell me if I'm wrong here. Can a plaintiff sit as a judge? Because all of our judges are attorneys at one point. So, how can the judges be the plaintiffs at the same time? Dunn and Bradstreet clearly shows that that is the case. And the affiliations are incredibly long. For anybody who wants to look, state of Georgia is the plaintiff. State bar of Georgia is affiliated with state of Georgia. How, in the good Lord's name, can they not be a conflict of interest? How are we prosecuting all of these people? How? Someone needs to answer this because we have conflicts galore. The corporations run this county. They run this state. They run this country. The information is there to see. Anybody who wants to look at the information contained in Dunn and Bradstreet and other credit reporting agencies will confirm my words 100%. I want to thank you very much for hearing me today. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda items, the chairman will be provided opportunity to add or delete items. One would be with Parks and Recs, a resolution, a contract with Green Badge LLC doing business as UGMO Technologies to Monet Irrigation Systems. A resolution approving an access license that would authorize Highlight to install, operate, and maintain video camera and ancillary equipment to record events at sports, at certain sports venues owned and controlled by potential licenser. Juvenile court, the resolution accept a grant award of $60,588 for their criminal justice coordinating council for continuing Constitution of the juvenile mental health court. Development authority, a resolution to support a letter of community affairs, DCA, requesting less development census tract designations, LDCT, for census tract 703.04. Finance, a resolution to adopt and amend and restate defined benefit retirement plan. And purchasing, a resolution requesting the name change from URS to AECOM for intersection improvements for RFP number 15-20, on-call engineering design services. Would any of the board members like to add or delete any items from the consent? Not, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Here's. Next, on the agenda, we have the splash, a resolution, a bid awarding construction of East Lake Road at Union Grove Middle School. Presenter Rocky Romero. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. East Lake Road Phase 2 was amended per resolution number 14-130, approved by the board on June 17th, 2014, to address the logical termini for the project. It was determined that the logical termini for the East Lake Road Phase 2 project should have been at the end of Union Grove Middle School to provide traffic congestion relief. Adding a turn lane into Union Grove Middle School will provide the necessary traffic relief as a result of increased traffic volumes. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department for construction of the East Lake Road at Union Grove Middle School, bid number 15-61. Three seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is $366,360.28 from Georgia Asphalt Inc. Funding for construction is available in the project budget. Staff recommends approval of the award, bid number 15-61, for the construction of a turning lane on East Lake Road at Union Grove Middle School to Georgia Asphalt in the amount of $366,360.28.
Any board members have any questions? Yes, go right ahead.
What's our time for this project?
Commissioner, we put in 60 days for the duration of the construction. So, hopefully, we can finish it before school starts.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more? Okay, we have in the books a resolution approving the bid award of a left-turn lane on East Lake Road in Union Grove Middle School. I have a...
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Here's.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next item we have is a purchase of one Kubota 1100 RTV. Presenter would be Mr. Terry McMichael, DOT Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board. Henry County DOT is required to maintain a lot of roadways that have concrete medians, sidewalks, curb and gutter, concrete islands, and guardrails. These areas require a huge amount of vegetation control that needs to be done every three to four weeks. Currently, we are walking these areas and spraying, utilizing backpack sprayer. When spraying a concrete median, this may require as many as four trips to kill the grass weeds at the edge of pavement, back a curb on each side. Henry County DOT proposes to purchase one Kubota 1100 RTV and equip it with a spraying system, including a tank spray bar with adjustable heads and a wand. Spray bar with the adjustable head can be set up to spray medians, both sides of guardrail, both sides of curb and gutter, or another, or a number of other combinations. This will allow our high-profile areas to receive weed control that our citizens are asking for. The Kubota 1100 RTV can be bought through NJPA Contract, which is a national contract, from Kubota Tractor Corporation for $20,722.45. In accordance with the NJPA contract, the order must be made to Kubota California and delivered to the dealer of our choice. We have contacted Mason Tractor, and they are in complete agreement with that. So, the tractor will be sent to our local dealer here. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any of the board members have any questions? We have a resolution in the book to purchase one Kubota 1100 RTV. Could I get a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, sir. You got one more, I think, Mr. ... Next, a purchase of a Greatall model number SL310044x2.
Henry County Department of Transportation still has some aged equipment. The request here is to replace asset number 4277, which is a 1995 Greatall. This Greatall has gone past its service life. This Greatall can be bought on a national contract as well. At Tractor and Equipment Company, the Greatall is an XL310044x2 hydraulic excavator, remote highway speed 4x2 with air conditioning, a wheeling 360 Super Strobe with branch guard and a 60-inch digging bucket with bolt-on cutting edge. Total price of this is $300,159.40. This is just like the other Greatalls we purchased probably about two or three months ago, two months ago. This will replace, this will be the last of the, kind of the old yellow Greatalls that you've seen out there that were quite aged. So, this should help us out considerably in that area. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does any board members have any questions? We have in the book a purchase of a Greatall number SL31044x2. Can I get a motion? Got a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. You got one more? Sorry. Next on the agenda, we have a purchase of one Toro Groundmaster 4010-D mower.
Citizens of Henry County have expressed a desire to see the right-of-way cut monthly. Currently, it takes our crews about two and a half months to make a rotation. In order to maintain certain areas more frequently, it requires additional equipment and operators. The DOT currently has two 60-inch zero-turn mowers that are used on higher-profile roadways. We would like to add a Toro Groundmaster 4010D mower to this crew. This mower has a cutting width of anywhere from 62 inches to 11 feet. This mower is available on the Georgia statewide contract from Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation in Atlanta for a total of $72,392.94. in Atlanta for a total of $72,392.94. Funds are available in our DOT capital equipment account. I might add that McDonough recently purchased two of these and, and they are doing quite well. Reason we went to something like this versus a Bushog type cut, we're going to get a much lawn-type better cut with this and a little more, it's a whole lot more maneuverable. And it does have, the 62-inch cut is on the front of it, and on each side, I believe it's three and a half inch wings that will float up and down. So if we're like cutting a shoulder and the front slope, we can make that pass as well. So it operates much like a bat wing on our mowers. So we are very anxious to get this on and add that to that list of equipment in, in an attempt to cut some of our more high-profile roadway areas more often and go this way instead of adding a conventional tractor and Bushog. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this one.
Does any board member have any questions?
Are you adding another member to the cutting crew or is this, because this is an additional tractor, correct?
This is an additional mower. We're not really replacing, we're going to add. And I'm going to take one of my vacancies that I currently have and hire somebody and put them in that position. So I'm not adding any people, I'm just going to hire, fill one of my vacancies and put them on that position.
Great, good, glad to see it.
Any more questions? We have in the book a resolution to purchase one Tora Groundmaster 4010-D mower. Can I get a motion?
It's a move.
It's a move. I get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, we have a request award purchase firefighter appliances and equipment to stock newly purchased Ferro fire trucks in the amount of $23,982.42 to the Georgia Fire and Rescue Supply.
Good morning Commissioners. We're excited to bring before you three resolutions this morning. The first one is for the replacement, or I'm sorry, the new equipment for the new fire trucks that were purchased or in the process of being purchased from the last capital improvement in February. If you'll see, some nozzles, fire appliances, deck gun are all part of this bid number 15-57. It's a recommendation of staff to go with Georgia Fire Rescue for the amount of $23,982.42 for this purchase.
Do we have, board have any questions? We got a resolution in the book, request to award the purchase of firefighter appliances and equipment to stock newly purchased Ferro fire trucks in the amount of $23,982.42 to Georgia Fire and Rescue. Could I get a motion, please?
Abode.
A second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, award of a bid for the purchase of a firefighter turnout gear and NAFCO in the amount of $20,640.
Yes, sir, this is a request to purchase turnout gear for the new firefighters in training at this time for the amount of $20,640 to NAFCO. This is a contract price back from January from HC-15-22 bid process that was approved by the board in January. Recommendation for us to go ahead with a purchase of $20,640, which is a budgeted item for this purchase.
Does any of the board members have any questions? We got a resolution in the book to award a bid for the purchase of a firefighter turnout gear for NAFCO in the amount of $20,640. Can I get a motion? Got a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, award for the purchase of X Series Defibrillators and Zoal Medical Corporation in the amount of $241,980.25.
Yes, sir, we're very excited about this, this purchase. December 31st of this year, seven of our cardiac monitors reach its end of life for our, our use. Through field testing, trials, and research, we found a, a way using funding that was allocated in February 17th through resolution 15-49 for capital improvement, to use that funding to turn in, trade in basically our, our older equipment and replace all our ambulances, the cardiac monitors on all our ambulances with new ones, better technology. So we're very excited about making a difference, a big impact on our citizens with this, this purchase. Our recommendation is to trade out contract we with Zoal Medical Corporation for the price of $241,980.25 to Zoal Medical for the trade-in and purchase of new life, cardiac life support equipment.
Does any board members have any questions? Can I get a motion?
A move.
Got a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, excuse me, could I have a vote? Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. The next item on the agenda is approval to accept a lease agreement with Officer Rick Franklin for the properties located at 2628 Stroud Road, Jackson, Georgia.
Good morning vice chair and board members. Before you, is it agreement to accept, an agreement with the lease purchase or lease for the public safety training facility located on Stroud Road. We have an officer in our police department that has requested to be, serve as a guardsman for that facility, and this is just an agreement between the officer and the Board of Commissioners.
Does any board members have a question? Could I get a motion?
Move to a bro.
I get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Police Department and Human Resources Department to split a $35,000 cost for education and training services for the police department. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning. How y'all doing? In an effort to be more responsive to the needs of the Henry County citizens, Henry County Police Department sought the assistance of the Henry County Human Resources Director and the County Manager. Then-County Manager Jim Walker advised the Human Resources Director and myself to provide onsite training sessions on basic diversity to address the climate of police-citizen interactions. The Human Resources Director recommended Al Vivian of Basic Diversity to teach the course. Mr. Vivian is a subject matter expert with an extensive governmental client base. The County Manager approved the training and instructed the Human Resources Director and myself to provide two-day training sessions for all of my supervisors. The first two-day training session was conducted on May 18th and 19th this year at the Police Department Training Facility. A second two-day training session will be provided on June 22nd and 23rd, 2015, at this training facility also. Each training session costs $17,500 for a total of $35,000 for both sessions. The County Manager directed payment for the sessions to be split equally between the Police Department and the Human Resource Department at one session each. The Police Department has $17,500 in Uniform Patrol Division Education and Training Account to cover this expense. The Human Resource Department has $17,500 in Human Resources Education and Training Account in anticipation of this expense. Recommendation is to authorize the expenditure of the $17,500 from the Police Department and $17,500 from Human Resources for two-day training sessions on basic diversity taught by Mr. Al Vivian.
As our county becomes more diverse, we have to ensure that we're meeting our citizens' need, the needs of our citizens, and also that we are taking, making every effort to reduce any type of adverse events in the future. So thanks so much for, for all your, all your work on this.
Thank you.
Any other board can come in. We have a resolution in the books, authorized from the Henry County Police Department and Human Resource Department to split the $35,000 cost for the education and training services for the Police Department. Could I get a motion, please? I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a request approval of an annual software maintenance for the Police Central Jail Management and Records Management for the Sheriff's Department. Ms. Skip Floyd, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Item before you is a request to renew the annual maintenance agreement for the Police Central Software System used by the Sheriff's Department. The Police Central Software System automates common law enforcement tasks in the Sheriff's Department. The current maintenance agreement is expiring and the resolution is to approve a renewal of that maintenance agreement for one year in the amount of $42,212. The funds are currently in our budget for Technology Services Department as approved by the Commissioners. Any questions?
Members have a question? Got a motion to approve, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next on the agenda, need to get a motion to approve the minutes for the May 5th, 2015.
I wasn't at that meeting, so...
Okay. I get a second? Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Mr. Chairman or any of the Commissioners have a comment?
I've got one comment.
Yes, sir.
Coach Herr, I'd like to thank four firemen. Sunday morning, I had an accident at my brother-in-law's house where we had to call 911 and thanks to those young men, they did a fabulous job. I can't say enough about our firemen, our police officers, all our departments. But I'd like to thank John Esq., Luke Andrews, Charles Marks, and Anthony Worthy, which is known by Tony, for a job well done.
Does anybody else have a comment? I have one comment. I'd like to thank the DOT. Down in District One, Weems Road, we had it washed out with the heavy rains, and I appreciate them working hard all weekend to get it back in, in service for their constituents, so thank y'all. Does the County Manager have a comment?
Yes, sir, I have a few comments.
Beg pardon?
Yes, sir, just a few comments for the board. Can you hear me, Commissioner?
I can't hear you, ma'am.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. Yes, just a few comments. Wanted to certainly thank the board for the approvals this morning in regards to the equipment purchases for the DOT Department. As you can see, staff is being very proactive in hearing some of the needs and concerns that have been raised by our citizens in trying to make sure that we are cleaning up some of those high-profile areas, so wanted to thank the Commissioners for that. Also, wanted to make everyone aware that yesterday was the first day of hurricane season, and as you all probably have seen the last couple of days, it's been pretty bad weather out there, so just wanted to make sure that everyone was prepared for that and to make sure that if you don't have a weather radio, to get with our 911 department, and we should be able to provide those various departments that may not have one with one. Also, just wanted to give you all an update. As of April 30th, the county had, has collected about 86% of our projected revenue, so that's certainly something that I want to brag about because we do make projections early on. And right now, as of April 30th, we've collected 86% of it, and we've expended about 76% of our budget as of April 30th. Because today is June 2nd, we haven't closed out the books for May, but I will report back to you all at the next meeting what our revenues and expenditures are. And then finally, just wanted to again add accolades to our Finance Department for being recognized by GFOA. That's certainly an honor. Not a lot of jurisdictions are recognized, so I just want to again thank staff for doing a great job. And also, again, wanted to thank the various departments that have been very responsive to the number of requests that have come in over the course of the last week. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does County Attorney have a comment?
No, sir.
I think we've got one executive.
We need a brief executive session for two quick bill of state matters, please.
Upcoming events, upcoming meeting and events. Tuesday, June 16th at 6:30 PM is a regular board meeting. Tuesday, July 7th at 9:00 AM is a regular board meeting. Could I get a, a motion to convene in the executive session?
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. We are going in the executive session.